This is a meeting of the Lemmonster School Committee. It is Monday, August 29th, at Appleseed Restaurant. And this is a regular meeting of the Lemmonster School Committee. We all stand and join me in salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started and then, again, my readings should be on their way. Public comment, would anyone like to address the school committee? If so, just your name and address for the record, please. Once again, if there is no one, we'll close this portion of the meeting. We'll move on to communications with the superintendent.
Okay, to the chair, there's no communications for the school committee this evening.
And the superintendent should report.
Okay, just quickly, for the school committee purposes and for the public, we have opening day, all the staff came back today. We had a professional development day today. Opening day is tomorrow, so the staff ultimately convenes at the Lemmonster High School Auditorium for remarks by myself and meetings with the unions. And then ultimately, staff goes back to their buildings to attend faculty meetings, prepare their classrooms for the first day of school. So that is the extent of the day tomorrow. And then, all students return on Wednesday. Except for kindergarten, kindergarten will resume following the Labor Day weekend on the 6th. So the important part of today's professional development, we did the implementation of the ALIS Safety and Security Protocol with all of the staff that attended the professional development today. We want to publicly thank the Lemmonster Police Department. We had representation in each of the buildings based upon what the plans were by the principals to actually implement the protocol. The e-learning approach, which the committee has discussed as we've been speaking of the implementation, I pushed that out to all of the teaching staff. And so they had this, they received an invitation via email with a link, and it introduced them via a video online professional development piece so that they could become oriented to the ALIS protocol. And then subsequently, we ran some scenarios in many of the buildings. So it was very, very successful. I was able to get around to about five of the buildings this morning. And all of the pieces were very, very successful. And it was primarily due to the coordination by the principals and the representatives of the Lemmonster Police Department. So I called the chief this afternoon to thank him for his help. From a transportation standpoint, all the transportation routes have been posted, have been out there. Peter Progen, who is one of the employees internally, who has, in the past, done some transportation coordination work, as well as has been a bus driver for some of the buses that we had that were district-owned buses. He has taken over the responsibility for transportation coordination for the initial part of the school year. So his number has been posted, and calls are being referred to him if they can't be answered by the individual schools or the individual staffs at the schools. And he has been doing the troubleshooting on any bus tops or bus routing situations. So, so far, so good. We're ready to start the opening day tomorrow, and we should be in good shape. So I just wanted, as the superintendent's reported, I just wanted to make sure that the committee was up to date on that. And as we get into the agenda, I'll just overview a couple of more things for the handouts that are in front of you, so.
Superintendent, could you just speak to the, I think, one of the things that's confusing, it might not make sense to a parent, is if they have one child that's going to school in one school, I'm sure you've heard this over and over, Chris, I'm sure you're getting a million, you know, a million of these calls. Because we are, if one student goes to one school...
Siblings?
Then they're siblings. And one ends up going to a totally different school.
Okay, yeah, we have a couple...
And the parents are like, "Well, I don't understand. Why don't we just send them to the same school?" And I know there's a good reason for that, but I'd certainly like to be able to get that out.
Yeah, I'll go through the process. Gina Wernan's here from the Parent Information Center. If I miss anything, she can pick up.
Did anybody else have people calling them on this same exact issue? Nobody, no?
Okay, so we had a couple of cases. Right now, we have very, very limited kindergarten classes at Fallbrook School. And most of the cases that we have are all about Fallbrook School. In most cases, we have tried to provide seats for parents who already have children going to school at Fallbrook. But because of the number of limited kindergarten seats that we have, plus there's a ge, well, primarily because of the limited seating we had, we had to place some geographic boundaries around Fallbrook. And if they're within that geographic boundary, they will either be assigned to Francis Drake or to Priest Street. So far, we're dealing with two cases with people who are very dissatisfied with the fact that their children were assigned to a different school. We always have a couple of cases each year because of this. You know, until such time that we can either make a change or expand the kindergarten classes at Fallbrook, there's not much we can do. So in order to identify fairly the people, if for some reason something changes with a child that's already been assigned to Fallbrook, we ran a lottery based upon a random number process that Jim Riley has in place for the lottery. We now have a priority list that's been set up. So if for some reason a seat opens up, we will put the next child on the list in a Fallbrook seat. But right now, we're limited, and we do have a couple of individuals who aren't totally satisfied with the assignment. But we, there's not much we can do at this point. So I think you received a couple of calls regarding that, and we have been dealing with them in Central Office. So, might I just go up to the mic, Gina, if you want to make additional clarification?
No, that is, the other thing to remember is that this is a kindergarten situation because our kindergarten students are dispersed amongst our elementary schools and then Priest Street. And so what happens is kindergarten children, if they have a sibling in the home district school, they may not be able to attend that school because of the space. Now, when they go to grade one through five, they return to their neighborhood school, so they will be good. So, it's unfortunate, but we don't have enough space to accommodate everybody at their neighborhood school in kindergarten.
Okay.
I understand that for right now, but as we move forward into the school year and people shift around and leave our area, leave our city and whatnot, new people moving in, will they be automatically sent to Priest and Francis Drake? Before being, if they moved into the Fallbrook District and they're in that range of...
Kindergarten, no, they're not because those schools are closed.
Okay, all right. Because I would hate to see someone coming in, in beginning of November and being allowed to go to Fallbrook when we have families that have wanted to be at Fallbrook and can't.
Right, I understood that would not happen.
Okay.
Yeah, the system's fair. It's just, I think people don't understand, it doesn't sound right. If you explain this to somebody, like, "What? One kid has to go to school there, and the other one has to go there."
I just want to make sure that down the road...
Yeah, there's a good explanation for it. I just don't know that people get the full story as to why. So it creates a little bit of...
No, and through the chair, it is difficult. We do understand that it's so much easier to have both children at the same school and be able to do one pickup, et cetera. We're totally cognizant of that, but it's just unfortunate that we can't always make those decisions because of the limitations that we have, so.
Okay, and then we'll move on to the update on technology. You have a number of items here under 2B.
Yeah, if I could, through the chair, if I could just quickly go over the materials that are in front of you. I provided you with the new editions of Selected Mass General Law. We refer, especially policy, refers to the Mass General Law in a lot of cases when we are researching or presenting policy. So that's there for you if you need to cross-reference anything during the course of the year. We also provided you with a Lemmonster Public School 16-17 calendar. It's been on the website, it's been distributed, but we gave you a hard copy so that you can put it inside your binder or inside the notebook that you usually carry with you. On the reverse side of the calendar is all of the information that committee members typically will call Chris or I about, and that is the report card schedules, as well as the open house dates, et cetera. So I think an original version went out without the Francis Drake open house date. That's been clarified and has been added to the calendars that have recently been published. We've also provided you with a listing of the Central Office telephone extension. So if you're trying to reach anyone at Central Office, this is the updated list. I know it's sometimes difficult to be able to navigate your way through when you are trying to get a hold of somebody. So Chris has listed this alphabetically, as well as alphabetically by the title or the area where the person works. So I have also given you a copy of the agenda for tomorrow's opening day. So if any of you are available, I know there's a lot of people who work and unavailable first thing in the morning. But any of you who are available, where you have Continental Breakfast that is sponsored by both Chotwells and the Lemmonster Employees Credit Union at 8:00. We will start promptly at 8:30. There's no guest speaker this year, so we should be able to move quickly through the PowerPoint presentation, give staff the opportunity to be able to break out into their individual union associations for chat meetings, and then return to their school buildings for the first day of school. So that's the information there if anybody wants to swing by in the morning. So thank...
Where is the present high school?
High School Auditorium, yep, yep. So thank you, and we'll move on to the technology.
Technology, please.
We have Jerry Ash and Larry Gianakis from the IT Department. We wanted to make sure that the committee was updated on where we stand with the technology implementation, which includes not only some network upgrades, but upgrades to the wireless networks which were in question last year, as well as implementation of actual hardware that we purchased with the $250,000 that was provided to us by the city at the end of the fiscal year. So Jerry, I'll turn it over to you. And you also have a handout to cross-reference in front of you.
I'll speak to the handout that, can everyone hear me? I'll speak to the handout that was given to you. This was emailed to all of the district leadership so that they could disseminate the information to their staff. The first part, we did a meeting in the middle of August, so that reflects the middle of August timeframe, so I'm going to update those. The projectors, we received 55 projectors from the $250,000 capital monies that were given to the City of Lemmonster Schools. And all the schools, Fallbrook has received nine projectors. Northwest received eight, JA has four, excuse me, JA has three, and Francis Drake has four, and Samset received one. Those are all installed and functional. And we are working on Skyview, which will be receiving the bulk of the projectors, 30. There are nine installed as of this afternoon. So by the end of this week, Friday, all the rest of them will be installed and fully functional. So the staff is, the staff in all buildings are very excited about getting those. It makes their presentation and curriculum a whole lot easier. The laptops, we have 54 laptops that were purchased. Those will be distributed across the district. Those are mostly for staff members to replace older laptops that have been in use seven, eight years. So those are a mixture across the district, the high school, JA, Francis Drake, Samset, et cetera. Chromebooks, we were able to get 361 Chromebooks. It's an odd number, but it worked for the finances. So all of the schools except for Bennett and Samset Preschool received Chromebooks. So it's a variety of numbers depending upon the need of that building. And then we were also, the schools actually purchased the cart that was, will be used for charging them. And those will be set up, the carts are just coming in, so those will get set up this week. It's early next week. The Samset Wireless Network, we have completed about 97% of that today. All of the electronics have been updated and are fully functional. The Aruba Wireless solution has been deployed throughout the building. The cap, the music room, and the gymnasium, we have to get a bracket. So those three APs are not yet installed, but will be as soon as the bracket comes in. And Skyview, the paperwork is at City Hall for that project. The E-rate approval, you may remember the superintendent telling you that we had to do a substitution because when we originally did the E-rate proposal two years ago, the product that we were going to use would not be available for purchase. So they discontinued that last year. So we had to do a substitution, which meant paperwork going back to schools and libraries. And we received CMSPERS, and we received Skyview's just a couple weeks ago. And that's in process with City Hall. So we also have just received, we haven't really done much with it, but we've received the E-rate proposal to finish the last eight, nine rooms of CMSET to switch them from the HP solution, which links to this building, and make them a fully, an Aruba solution throughout the building, which will be, which will be better with your own controller, and they won't be linked here. So, and the other piece that was done this summer was the bandwidth has been increased at the high school. So they went from approximately 300 to a gigabit of bandwidth. So those are basically the technology updates that we did. We did get some more donations, and we've been putting those out in the schools as well. We didn't need to buy too many desktops this time with the purchase because we had received the Carbonite donation. I think that was brought to you in late January, February timeframe. So the rest of the content of this was just some information about Windows, VAM. And there is two subscriptions that we have in the district, Atomic Learning and Discovery, that we also have presentations. And then tonight, the superintendent wanted us to focus on the new webpage. The new webpage is done by School Blocks, that's a software company. And it is considerable savings from what we had last year. The previous webpage used to be eratable, that's a word, and they no longer will key rate a website. So we looked around for something improved and something better and less moneying, and we found School Blocks. And I think that everyone is wanting to, so far, the reaction's been very, it's been very well received. It's still under development. Today, we did two presentations for Francis Drake and Northwest School to the staff. And Larry's going to go into more detail about what the teachers are being asked to do. The basis of the School Blocks is it's set up in blocks. And it's set up by the district home page, and then it has departments. So all of the district offices are under departments, and then it has all the schools. And I'm going to let Larry go into that in more detail. One thing I do want to point out is that there's a translate button on this website. So down at the bottom left, if you're looking at the website and you click on translate, you can then look at the very top, and it pulls up a grouping of all the languages. You choose one of the languages, and then you hit translate. And anything that's in a text box in one of those blocks will be translated into their language. So we're asking, you know, the schools, Michael Giari and others, to point that out to some of our bilingual parents so that they'll be able to utilize that and get information from the website. I know I said two hands.
Yeah, Jerry, I'd just like to ask you about Skyview. With what you have at City Hall waiting to be processed, when that's complete and back, you know, you get the stuff, will that bring us to where it's completely functional at Skyview? And they're, will be able to use their Chromebooks and everything that they've stockpiled and...
All right, at this time, the problem with what was the infrastructure at Skyview is that we did not have power over Ethernet switches. They're called PoE switches. And those switches need to be there so that the access points, the APs, can be plugged in. When we first deployed wireless in the school buildings, we did it as a coverage because we didn't have that many mobile devices. So we had coverage with the Aruba solution. The Aruba solution is dated now. And what we're doing this time, as we have done at Samset, is there is an access point in every one of the classrooms. So those access points can handle about 40, they say 50, but I would say 40 is more likely number, but 40 devices in that environment. So if there's an access point here, then we could do 40 devices, that kind of a situation. The Aruba is a real solid solution, and that's what Skyview will also have. So when we get all our paperwork back, we'll send that to the vendor, so that will be their purchase order. And then it takes about three or four weeks for them to get product from HP. Aruba comes in a little bit quicker, but we can mount the access points, but we can't activate them until we have the switches. So, and what we probably plan to do to limit impact to the building, because it is going to be the school year, I'm hoping, if everything, if the timeline works out, that we would do, they have seven closets where we have to do the updates. So we would do all of the IDF's that are around the building, and we would save the MDF hopefully to that full day of professional development and ask Skyview if they could partake of, you know, PDs in another building so that we can shut down the network and get all the switches in and stock to, you know, ensure everything's fully functional.
Which, I know we had some other questions, but just, maybe this might help us. When you put up a system, does every electronic device that's out there grabbing on to this internet access here, the wireless internet capabilities here, just drawing off of the system?
We have three, if you would, three networks that are available. So there's a secure network, which you have to authenticate. And then there's the Chromebook network, because we've found that here it's better if we separate the Chromebooks. And then there's a guest network. And the guest network gives you internet access, but it's limited. You don't get the resources of printing and...
But you can't watch a video on it or something?
Yeah, it's a limited bandwidth, so that...
Limited bandwidth.
...all the guests coming in don't take up all the bandwidth that the students and teachers need, you know, to do their...
But here, last year, there's like a drawer, at certain times of the day, it just seemed like everybody must have logged on at the same time, and it was just moving at a snail's pace, so...
Well, we have 2,000 devices plus at any given time, you know, or up to 2,000 devices on. So if you have 2,000 devices trying to get on a 300-megabit connection, if you consider most houses have 50 now, I mean, it's...
So you almost got to overbuild it to like 3,000 devices. And then that, you had 1,000 people in the auditorium at a time, or 500 people plus who was there. You almost have to overbuild it.
Right, because even on...
We had 1,400 on the guest, most days last year.
Yeah.
And that's why we increased the bandwidth. That was another drawback, was the bandwidth wasn't sufficient.
By increasing the bandwidth, is that going to help the teachers out that we heard complaints about on not being able to...
You have more than enough now, right?
Well, downloading, if everybody is streaming video, that's always a problem.
In theory, in theory, yeah.
It would be better if they downloaded the video, or especially from Discovery Learning, Discovery Education, if they downloaded the pieces that they wanted and used it from within the network, it would be such a draw. But the problem is, is that, you know, you have a lot of students here, and they all bring in a smartphone, and that is the policy. And we don't want to restrict that. And a lot of classrooms are allowing them to use their handheld device to do some research or, you know, other things that they have going on in the classroom. So this is why the superintendent, I have, we have conversation, and it's always been the plan, his plan, to increase the bandwidth as we go along. It's costly, so, you know, we probably under-ordered last year. We underestimated the draw. And I'm sure that there are going to be peak days, even with the dividend. If it's there, they're going to use it.
The student is on the guest list, the student would be on the guest list. Chrome would be on the Chrome, and then staff and everybody else would be on that.
Yeah, all school-owned devices would be on that internal. And we can, we can adjust the amount of bandwidth to the school-owned devices, you know, so the guest gets just a small chunk of it.
Rating?
If you have like this event here tonight, you know, you could have a small amount of people on there, so there's plenty of bandwidth for a small group of people. But unfortunately, when, you know, you're having a school play and you're trying to get, you know, 700, 800 people, you know, on the guest wireless, the bandwidth will, it gets congested very fast.
And then you can add to the system if you need to, right? You're not going to have to scrap the whole system to add to it. In the past, we had to build a system, and then it was inadequate, or the system, you know, it was outdated, so they had to pull the whole thing out, install a whole new system. We can increase the bandwidth if we need to.
Right, and part of the design process of, you know, like, the middle schools right now is, it's not just giving them an access point, it's having all the network equipment configured efficiently so that you don't have, you know, you know, log jams of, you know, all the data has to flow freely. So if everything had to go through one point, it would get, even though we might have, you know, a lot of bandwidth open to get to the internet, if we don't operate our network properly, it's just going to all get congested before it even gets to the internet, so that's...
I think we have some other que, did you have a question, Heather?
I did, it was kind of based along the same lines. I was just curious if it was, I know we were having problems last year. I just wanted to make sure that the bandwidth and everything that's coming in is, every school is going to be...
It's a year contract that we do with addition networks, formerly Merrimack Education Center, or actually, Merrimack's still there, it's subsidiary. And we do that, it runs from July 1st through 30th. So each year, we do an assessment of what the bandwidth has been and what our usage is, and we work on increasing. So that was, that increase came about in July, and we'll see this...
Find out Wednesday.
Just tell everybody to turn it on at once.
We'll invite 1,800 of our friends.
Yeah, all right, now, everybody, turn it on. Ron?
All right, my question is multiple. One, as you were saying, there was 40 devices, capable of 40 devices.
Forty.
Forty, okay. When you say 40, who's the 40? Is it some of the teachers, it's some of the students?
It's everybody, it's every device.
Now, secondly...
You make two, so you count as two.
Okay, and you were talking about Chrome, and you were talking about two other...
One is a secure network, that's the one that you...
Okay, what I wanted was, can the kid, let's say, for example, here I am, I'm the kid. With my phone, I have the guest, like you said. Can I go, can I go from that to Chrome and then to the other one?
You can not be on all three at the same time.
That's what I wanted to know.
No, not on one.
How does it, because you see...
If you authenticate on that phone, then you're going to be on the secure.
Okay, but I can't go from here to Chrome to the other one?
Not three at once, no. Your device can only handle one network at a time.
What if the kid wants to go from Chrome, he wants, he or she wants to get whatever?
They might not be able to have that, like, at City Hall, the guests don't have access to the whole system, so they can't get into the city system.
Well, okay, you set the password, but...
Same way here, right? You can't get into the system. A teacher, a teacher might be able to.
I'm not asking to go into the system.
Then you're a guest.
Okay, you have your phone here.
Like, with this thing, I know I can't go to Google with this while I'm here.
Right.
And I can't, but if I wanted to go to Google, I'm just, I'm just, because, forgive me if I'm asking a stupid...
You could as a guest, no?
As a guest, but if the kid, if the kid, me, wanted to research something while you guys are talking, saying, you know, you were saying the Monroe Project or whatever, and I wanted to find out quickly without asking you what the Monroe Project is, would I be able to go from this to this to this? But I can't.
That's not really, those three things, the guest network is for...
It's separate, it's a wall.
It's for my phone. It's for everybody to bring their phone in, connect their phone to.
But you hamstring the person.
The Chrome one is designed for our Chromebooks.
So you'd have to get out of one to...
No, 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 no. You wouldn't go into that, just Chrome, just Chrome.
I'm just asking, guys, because someone's, I hate to break the news to you, someone's going to hack... I'm just asking, guys, because someone's going, so, I hate to break the news to you, someone's going to hack, some kid's going to figure out how to do it.
No, not everybody has access to every, every silo. Yeah, but Jerry, what he's trying, he's confused because, in other words, there's three silos. Not everybody has access to three silos. You can't get, a student can't get to all three. He can't get to Chrome, and he can't get to the secure network.
Unless he or she has a password.
No, unless it's a teacher or somebody that can get hooked to the security.
They have passwords for the secure network, so they can authenticate.
But if the kid has a password, he could go to all three.
No. He's not going to be allowed to. There's walls. He can only use the guest list.
With the Chrome, for an example, that's assigned to the Chromebooks through our Chrome management system. So, nobody sees that password. It's assigned automatically to a device. They flip the device open. Eight seconds later, it's on to them.
It has to be on Chrome device.
It's part of our system.
And it'll be on, and they'll, from there, they'll get up to the internet.
And then the secured system is for staff and everybody that's here. And then the guest would be for the student who brings their phone in and decides they want to look up, you know, chapter seventy-one, the hay.
You know, whatever topic they're...
So, those three areas, they're part, they're, they're separate.
Yes, and there's firewalls in each one. Firewalls in each one to make them secure.
Now, here's the terrible question. What happens if someone figures it out and can get through?
You better invest some money in it, because they're pretty smart.
No, I'm dead serious, because fail-safe methods, there's a reason why they ask for fail, Doctor Strangelove lives everywhere. What fail-safe method do you have to stop this?
The firewall.
Through the Chromebooks, for example. If we had a problem, I can change the password. I can go into Chrome Management. I can change the password there. And now all of the Chromebooks will connect to the, with the new password. That's something, if, you know, we want to decide we want to change it every six months or a year, or if we don't find a need, we can actually see who's on what networks. So, if we look and we see that, you know, all of a sudden, you know, we, we know we have a hundred twenty Chromebooks, and we're seeing three hundred people on the Chrome, well, then we know it's time to change the password. Some kid, you know, brought in some software. It's not set it and forget it. It's something that gets monitored.
But there are firewalls in place to stop people from moving from one silo to the other.
Right.
Hypothetically, can anybody hack it from somewhere, a guest?
I, I hate to use the word hack it. I mean, any, any kid, any kid, spending enough time on their computer can figure out how to get through something.
Well, the, the secure, our secure network is, yeah, the secure...
No, go ahead. I asked a terrible question. I know I did. It's a firewall question.
The secure wireless network is tied into our network. So, what happens is if you have an account on our network, you can get into the secure network. But if you don't, then it's going to go talk to our server, and you have to prove who you are with the username and password. If it doesn't match what's on our server, you don't get in.
That's the authentication process.
I guess it's because you know as well as I do the problems that we had with this little spam thing that we had earlier, you know, with the, with the, with the schools.
Spam is everlasting.
I know. But what hap...
But that is independent of the wireless. That I can promise.
Yeah, that's not part of what we're talking about.
No, I know, but...
That's part of the email.
All right.
Well, the system's only as good as the technology.
No, I know, I'll stop. I, I feel like I'm...
Eventually, it'll get better and better as far as secure walls, and, and eventually we'll go to the cloud with everything, and everything will be on the cloud, and it'll be, you know, hopefully safer.
I, I, I'm not, I don't want to sound like a luddite, but I, I do, I do, I do fear, even though it is those three separate things. I did ask for a particular reason. Can the person, boy or girl, male or female, adult, young, can they go from ding to ding to ding? Everyone's saying no. Mark my word. Today's August twenty-ninth. Somewhere, somehow, everyone's going to remember this conversation we had.
And there, you know, we have some bright students.
But we have, I mean, the technology we have now, obviously, you're, you're, when we started this off a couple of years ago, I think in the month of April or whatever it was, we had a two million dollars. We were, you know, the overall look was two million dollars, and we looked at that. But obviously, the cost of some things have dropped, right? Chromebooks have dropped. First time I asked, it was three something, and now...
Now, we're down to two hundred.
Two hundred dollars for a Chromebook. So, the cost is coming down. So, we're making our way, I mean, we're gradually getting to that point where we're, we've got, I mean, the big issue was Skyview. That'll be corrected. The high school was a huge draw. We didn't have, we had, everything was à la carte, so it had come in a cart. So, we're making some progress. So, what is, just a quick sort of, you know, look to the future here. What is sort of the next big need? Is it to just keep adding Chromebooks? Or is the hard backbone of the system pretty much in place now?
I think, yeah, go ahead, Jerry, but I think that overall, the, the network is in place. Jerry and I were kind of excited the other day because we've pretty much met the overall objective of getting projection in every, every academic classroom. There's still some classrooms that we would like to put projection in, but every academic classroom will now have projection across the district, which was a huge goal that I had set when I first started to set out the five-year plan. And we've made substantial improvement, as you've already said, on the number of devices that we can actually put in students' hands. So, for the foreseeable future, it's continuing to add devices so that we can get to the point where we can do a overall state assessment online. We will have some requirements for that in the spring, but that's, we're going to kind of retrench as soon as these final access points are put in, figure out what we need, and I think we can fulfill what our obligations are going to be for the spring, so.
So, the backbone is pretty much in place?
Well, the, the backbone is in pretty good shape at all buildings.
So, you don't have any servers that are about to fry out?
No, I don't think so. And, but the Maru, we presently have three solutions for wireless, the newest being Aruba. The high school is HP, which is been replaced by the Aruba, actually. So, I have another proposal into E-Rate to see if we can rework the high school and pyramid down those newer access points to replace the aged Maru system.
So, HP's the new technology that would replace that?
Actually, true, but yeah.
Was done during the renovation, but HP abandoned there. They're going to support the AP that, that they have by giving us updates and such. But it's not any longer per, we can't...
So, HP is the outdated?
They bought their competitor and adopted their technology.
So, so what we would like to do is to come back to the high school because those are your oldest students, and they're the most in need for those kinds of services. And then pyramid down the access points to the lower-grade buildings, which still are viable, but some of the Maru access points don't support some of the newer devices. So, so that would be the reason for wanting to replace Maru.
But the HP is, it's, you can convert it? I mean, it's the same company. They didn't make it, so you have to like pull the whole system out.
No, it's just a matter of moving the equipment to another school and reconfiguring it in the background to...
So, we would put Aruba into the high school, move the HP access points down to the elementary schools. We're still going to have a state-of-the-art wireless network across the district. We add more devices, we should be in good shape, so.
Right. And then, and then it's looking at the bandwidth, as you said earlier, that, you know, as you peak in, in usage, you, you may have to expand it, and it's, it's kind of parallel. If you buy more devices, then you have to buy more bandwidth.
So, the, the, so if you have the projectors in every room, backbone is convertible, and then it's, it's a pass-through, so you can move it towards grade levels. And then again, you might need some bandwidth in the low levels once they convert more equipment. Then, and you've, you've got that sort of influx of the Chromebooks coming in pretty heavy. So, what are the next, and your servers are in good shape. So, what's the next pieces of the, just more Chromebook?
The only pieces that we would have remaining is continue to replace outdated user equipment, you know, end-user equipment, but that's just kind of part of the process, so.
And to keep updated with your wireless network so that it doesn't become too age the equipment and doesn't support new laptops or Chromebooks or phones.
The one thing too is, to think about is, in, in, every, every plug that you see, you know, network plug goes back to a, a switch. So, you have one device plugged into one switch. Well, now we have access points that can now support forty devices. So, as you said, we're bringing in more devices. We might get to a point in the elementary schools where the switch technology gets, you know, it gets inundated, you know, with traffic because now we have four hundred devices trying to...
You have to update that.
So, that is something we may have to address in the future, but it's not something we have to look at immediately.
So, you, you would need, I'm just kind of looking down the road. So, really, you would need the hardware, the, the Chromebooks. You would need more Chrome. If we're going to stick with Chromebooks, at this point, we're heavy into it, so I assume I'm going to stick to Chromebooks. So, that would be the, the big thing.
They're a very good device for, you know, certainly for K through eight, probably nine and ten. There are certain specialty subjects at the high school that you would need different devices, your CAD or your graphic.
But those are isolated and strategic.
For, for day-to-day.
As, as we get into those servers, as they become outdated, I mean, are you comfortable yet with sort of moving to the cloud on those servers? Is that technology there?
We're, well, we're looking, bandwidth is going to be the big thing, you know, and we're obviously addressing that. Right now, we're, we're starting to really implement Google Apps for Education, and, you know, with the Chromebooks, things like that. We have unlimited storage for all staff and all students using Google Apps for Education, so...
That takes pressure off a whole...
But that's cloud-based.
So, that's cloud-based, so that is, that alleviates, you know, a lot of our servers because instead of the data just piling up on our servers, now we can store it, and we can move it to the cloud, and...
I don't think there are enough servers that we can build to handle all the information. That's the problem. So, once they get to that level where it's secure, then I think we're okay to start weaning our way out of these servers, which are just...
And advantage of the cloud is, you know, a lot, you know, a lot of people say, well, what happens if Google crashes? Well, if Google crashes, I can sit at my desk, and I can put my feet up, and I can wait for Google to fix it. You know, if our server crashes, I can pull my hair out and, you know, try to rebuild the server and pull data off of a backup and, you know, hope it's all there, and it, it's, it's a, it's a very time-consuming process. So, the cloud really, you know, with Google, is going to be something, I think, that's going to make our job, it's going to streamline my job, make it a lot easier. It's a single point of management. It's a single point for storage and backup at archives and email for us.
And they're very supportive of education.
And they are, and they support. If I call Google, I have somebody calling, either answer the phone or calling me back within ten minutes, you know, and they're from San Francisco or Atlanta, and they'll help me walk me through the process.
All right. So, we're in decent shape. I mean, we're getting there.
I believe we are.
Prices are coming down. I'm sure it's not coming down on the storage. I mean, that's where they're going to make their money later on.
Well, it's free.
No, but I'm saying down the road. I mean, that's where, our systems, that's where they're going to make all their money, charging us for, you know, storage, but there's a convenience. Ron, you have a question?
No, it's okay. No, don't worry about it. Okay. When you talk bandwidth, when you talk portal, they're the same preacher, right? When you say how much bandwidth you need, how much bandwidth you're looking to need versus the portal. Portal, if you've got a small portal, it gets all plugged up. If you've got a bigger portal, isn't that what you're talking about?
Oh, bandwidth, right. That's bandwidth.
Bandwidth, portal. The devil in me asks, at the beginning of the day, how big, how big is the portal? When is it at the highest?
The high school is the highest user.
What time of day do you have?
Lunchtime.
Do you have settings? And do you have settings for at night or in the evening? And are you capable, is the system ready to deal with that? Because you're the one, either you were saying, if you have two thousand people, allegedly, all of a sudden using it all at the same time?
Well, imagine it as a pipe. It's bandwidth as a pipe, and it only can hold so much water. So, it doesn't matter if, you know, if, if it can carry a hundred gallons a minute, right, through a pipe, and you only have a trickle, you still own that pipe, and you can still fill it all the way up if you choose to. And so, when we get to lunchtime, that pipe is full, and then the kids are watching their videos and checking their mail.
And that's when everything starts slowing down.
Right. And then other parts of the day, it's a little bit slower, and it, it just, it fluctuates throughout the day. And in the evening, it's, it's very quiet. We still have the full bandwidth. It's just nobody's using it. Like, right now, there's not many people in the building. You know, you, you, this is pretty much...
Well, there's a couple of individuals.
Right. So, but that's...
Is there any way to make the portal, the bandwidth, stretch out?
You have to buy more bandwidth.
You have to buy more bandwidth.
No, I don't, what, what's, if I don't ask, who else can ask?
You just make the change.
What's, what's, what's the maximum capacity for the bandwidth?
Whatever you want to pay for. It's really, it's, you, the more money you throw at it, the bigger bandwidth it gets.
How much money are we talking about? Well, you know, he was one of them saying, how much money you need or... What's, I want to know, what's the money? How mu, how mu, how much money are we talking about?
Ron, it sounds like, let me just...
That's what I'm asking.
It sounds like the system is sort of overbuilt, but let's just say there was some sort of a, something happened up here, and it just was one of those things that everyone hit the, you know, ran for their phone. You might reach a point where people coming in, parents and students and staff, everybody ends up on their phones, and you just, you know, but that can happen with the cell service. That can happen with anything. That's, that's...
It's happened with Facebook.
Right. That can happen. We're just...
Where so many messages came in that the system couldn't handle.
Exactly. But other than that, it's overbuilt. What they're saying is, they've looked at all the different trends by watching by hour, but how many students are here, how many, what's the average number, I guess, is the standard for the average number of, of devices that people have, and they took all that math, configured it all, and that's what they came up with. If we need more bandwidth, then you, I don't know, I guess Ron wants to know, well, how much more bandwidth? Like, what is the price for more bandwidth?
That's what I wanted.
Is it a hundred thousand a year, a thousand dollars a year?
Where are we going with that? How much is it, and when can we get it, and how long will it take?
July first.
Well, first off, it's a contract that you have from July one through June thirty. So, what we purchased is purchased, okay? And the bandwidth is, is an eratable piece. So, the federal government helps us with the cost. And, and we couldn't determine till you do their formula, how much money can we get back from here as a reimbursement or a discounted invoice situation. And so, the district pays a certain percentage, and actually, all of us pay the rest of it. It's a little charge, a surcharge on your phone bill, and it goes to the schools and libraries E-Rate Fund, and that's how they fund that back to schools and libraries. So, the fund is intended to help schools and, and public libraries purchase the bandwidth they, they need in order to support the student population that they have with the number of devices that they have.
So, you'd evaluate it again next time you go for a contract, and if you needed it again, you'd, you'd add to that and offer it?
Yes. We've actually increased it each year. It's been smaller increases. This was a bigger jump because we have more devices and more. And because of the policy change where students are allowed to use their own devices at the high school, that has impacted us as well. The week after Christmas, for instance, we see a surge because everyone got a Christmas gift. So, you know, suddenly, there's a lot more devices that are being used.
Amazing.
So, that's, you know, it did happen. We were sitting there, and they go, how come from December to January? What's the change? And then we thought about it and said...
Watches and radios and name it.
So, that's what happened. So, it does fluctuate, and it's calculated each time. But we did want to be able to spend...
Yeah, let's jump to the, to the website.
We want to be as succinct as possible, Larry, just kind of give an overview. And then if the committee members wish to have more detailed information, we can look at it again, but...
Best thing is for everybody to, I'm sure everybody's gone to it, but the best thing is just go fool around and get on it, right? And just kind of experiment.
So, this, the new product we're using is called School Blocks. The big advantage to this is, you know, we're starting to implement Google for Apps for Education. What this allows us to do is it allows us to pull in a Google Calendar right into the webpage. It allows us to pull in files from our Google Drive right into the webpage. You can see here, here's a collection of folders that are in a Google Drive, and that's an actual file itself. So, there's two different ways we can display that. The other thing we have is we have the ability to pull in Facebook feeds and Twitter, social media. What this allows us to do is as the limits to public schools updates their Facebook page, it updates the webpage. So, our webpage can have, be current and have current content without someone having to come to the webpage every time they want to post something. They can post it right to their Facebook page, and then it will just, it'll show up here. So, that, that is an advantage. A lot of the schools, as we've been talking, are actually looking, the ones that haven't done it are going to start using Twitter and Facebook because it's a way to stay in touch with their parents, but without having to come in and edit a webpage every time they want to do that. They can just post it to, you know, Facebook, and then it just shows up right there.
One of the nice features of the website is that it optimizes for the device you're using. So, if it's your phone, it's got a size to the phone, screen size. And so that you're not trying to scroll over to the right to see, you know, work from it or something because it doesn't fit your screen. So, it optimizes to the device.
And this is actually a little cramped right now because when we plugged in the projector, it squished everything down.
Larry, the calendar, will we still be able to see the calendar like it used to be?
The calendar is set up?
Yeah, like that.
So, every school, what I've done, we've set up a school year calendar that has all the, that calendar that you got, you know, tonight. It has all those dates on it. And each school will have their own calendar as well, so they can, and you can overlay those on top of each other. And that way, as a school committee member, you can subscribe to every school's calendar, and they can show up on, on your phone because every Google Calendar has a, a shareable address. And the way you would get that is you can click on this, find the calendar you want. You click sync, and from your smartphone, you can now sync it up. you want, you click sync, and from your smartphone, you can now sync it up, and now it's on, on your phone. So, you'll see that on your calendar.
But I think the good part is, it's got everybody's email addresses on there, and the last year, it didn't, none of that was up on there.
Right.
And that's another plus, because the email now, if you haven't logged in, is mass, so it's two layers below, which is going to help reduce someone's speed, because our, our former webpage had the email addresses right on the top level, and so.
You've got everything. Anything that came in.
Yeah, so if you, if you see right here, it says, click to view the email address. What happens is those little bots, they call them, go out and they, they scan your webpage and they look for email addresses. So, what this is, because it's another link, it's actually not on, it's embedded within the page, so those bots aren't going out and capturing our email and adding us to their spam list.
Now, most of this system is really relying on you, on everyone to fill it up with information, right? That's, you know, the backbones there.
That's important feature.
So, now, it'll do as much as you want it, right? The nuts and bolts are there, it'll do anything you want it to do, it's just you've got to feed it the information. They're not going to feed it.
So, is there somebody at each of the schools that is dedicated to keeping this updated?
Yeah, and that was one of the most important features, and Jerry and I went back and forth on this. I said, if we're going to move to another website initiative, I said, the, it has to be user-friendly, people need to be able to easily update content, and we need to make the principals accountable for the update of their content. So, we presented this at the district leadership team meeting, had an extensive conversation about it. We have at least two or three schools right now that are very, very active in updating content. The others will be come along or they've contacted Jerry and Larry to come in and help them out with information sessions, and as part of every principal's standard three goal in the eddy vow, which is community outreach, they have accountability for the content on the website. So, you'll see a vast improvement. It's still going to take a while to be able to get it populated to the level that we would like to, but I think we're on track to be able to get it done, so.
The general consensus so far is that people like it, staffs like it. They're not being asked to throw away what they did last year.
Right, right.
They can link it into one of their teacher pages if, if they so choose and continue to use their social media.
Like the PTOs or something.
Blogs or whatever. And so, the only thing that we've asked all staff to do is to go in and check their title, their phone, their phone number for the school, and that their email address is corrected. And we, we have generally checked everybody's, but sometimes, like especially at the high school, I know the person is a math teacher, but I don't know if they teach calculus, for instance, and that might be something they would want in their title, and they can edit that. So, they have control and they have ownership of their piece of the site. And as parents get involved and they see that the teacher is developing some classroom pages.
This is some point.
There's a button called follow.
Yep.
And, and they can follow that teacher. So, especially at the high school where a student might have six, seven teachers semester one, and then those teachers may change, well, not all of them, but, you know, three or four of them might change. So, they can drop the first semester course teacher and pick up the second semester course. And so, they can have their following be, and Larry can show you who he follows, because he's, he's done some with his account. So, they can follow the high school people, they can have their elementary teachers in there, so they don't have to search through 400 names to find out, you know, what's happening in my classroom.
So, how are parents going to be aware of this for those that are not maybe tech savvy?
This, this is also going to have to be done through the buildings. We're not out at the buildings, but, you know, we're hoping through open house.
They're working on that now.
Times that they're going to.
Because that was their issue.
Introduce this to their parents as they come in, and especially during parent conferences, that, you know, you can log on to Google, you can follow my classroom, you know, I, we did some fun lessons, I took some pictures, I posted them. So, suddenly, I've invited all kinds of people into my classroom who normally wouldn't be able to get there. And I, I think that's a real plus to, for a parent to know that they're going to constantly get updates for homework or for projects, and it's very, the tools are very easy and they transfer across the site. So, if you're in one part of the site, it's, the tools are set, the tool set is the same.
I think people will find out about it, it's just they'll keep going back to it if there's no current information on it.
I think we need to make sure through open houses, through the PTOs.
Oh, yeah, they'll find out about it.
Through newsletter or whatever, to let folks know about this, because it sounds like a wonderful opportunity, but.
A lot of the PTOs have like Facebook, and they can link to this as well. So, when they do an update on their Facebook.
It automatically goes out to social media. I, we got on it and, because we were looking for an email address, and it was like, that was really easy, easy to use, found everything that we're looking for, and you could just spend like hours on it. You could really get sort of trapped in there.
Thank you.
What kind of money, what kind of, what's the cost of that? Obviously, it's a national company that does this specifically for schools. What do they charge you for?
This is schools. The webpage hosting that we had before was close to 19,000. The web hosting for this, and I'm rounding it off, is, is about 7,000 a year annually. So, it's about a third of what we were paying. We did have a one-time setup fee.
Right.
And so, that's, that's been taken care of this year. And then going forward, it would be, I think it's like 6,000, 700, 95, something like now.
Just for the annual renewal.
Yeah, it's an annual.
And then they'll charge you for like changes if you want to add a page to it or anything, or a block to it?
No, we do all that ourselves.
You're there.
Yeah.
So, you know you had seven grand a year and that's it.
Right.
That's good, that's reasonable.
And they have support, like right now, we get live support, so any staff member or, you know, principal, whoever can go in and if they have a question, how to do something, there's a little button, they can, when they're logged in, they click on it, and someone from the company as long, during their operating hours will actually answer their question for them.
They've been very responsive whenever we've had an issue, you know, they did a couple of updates during the summer when we were first launching, and it was a little bumpy at that moment, but a couple of our principals, I know Tim Blake has gone on and done some extensive posting, and he told me that he used the online chat and he found it very successful.
Good, oh, it's great, it's much better product.
Larry, a couple quick more things and we'll wrap it up.
I think the, I mean, the big thing is that, that the staff, the staff list, I think that's.
Yep.
One of the biggest features, the ability to, you know, connect to Google Drive and, you know, you can pull in Facebook feeds. It allows, and what I try to tell the principals is you can make your, your webpage current and relevant without actually logging into the webpage.
Right.
You know, by updating social media and, you know, you can have folders in your Google Drive and you can drag, you can just copy things into that folder and now that, it's instantly available, so.
If you take them to one of the school, the school feature is nice too. When you click on schools, there's four buttons there for the four different levels. If you click on, what'd you do?
Elementary.
Okay, it'll reorganize, everything is always done alphabetical, so, you know, if you're living in the preschools, Bennett's going to be first, and if you look in the middle, it's going to be Samusette. You click on one of those pictures, which I like as well, and this is the record card. It has a little map for parents if they were trying to find the school for the first time, and if they're using this from their phone, they can click that phone number and it will dial the number for you. And then you can go directly to the site, visit site.
It connects with Google Maps, right?
And then we just got AI, yeah.
Yep. And the, and the other thing is, is earlier, you saw the staff people with their pictures. We have made it mandatory that every staff person posts their picture. The pictures are taken by the district during the period of time that the students' pictures are being taken, so that they not only have a photograph of their security badge that they are wearing all the time now, but they also will put, will post it on the website with the image. So, if a parent goes in, they can immediately recognize their child's second grade teacher, they knew who she is before open house, they can communicate with her, et cetera. So, it really makes a nice communication vehicle, so.
School committee has a department, you can have your pictures posted.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you want to have pictures taken, we have a time that's set for central office photographs, I'll send that to you. So, any school committee member who wants to come in and have a professional photograph taken for the website, you can schedule yourself during that period of time and come in and have your photograph done, so.
I just wanted a website that you had us going at. You can't edit, like, I can't edit or add.
You, you can't, no, you have to be administrator of the page, because otherwise, the whole world would end in a website.
You're important, already know that.
You have to be.
You'd have.
Okay, I'm asking, I know.
You'd have Brad Pitt's picture and your name on there.
No, it's, go ahead, laugh at him if you wish, but it irritates the pajamas out of me. Every time I go to look, my name is here and the rest of my stuff is on the other page, and I was trying to bring the name onto the page, and I tried adding another.
That's your screen, that's the side of your screen.
We can enlarge the box.
No, no, I.
It's a PDF document.
Did you have a question, Wendy?
Yes.
Go ahead, I'll stop.
I do, I have a question, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is he done?
Go ahead.
Are you done?
No, go ahead, go ahead, please, jump in.
So, I, who is updating these, the cards with the pictures in the directory? Because I'm on the Francis Drake one right now, and some of them have the teacher's picture and their specific second grade teacher. Some have just the name and the little generic circle and says teacher, so it's not specific. Who's in the process of upgrading, updating all of that?
We presented to them this morning, okay, and a lot of them weren't sure of their Google accounts, so this afternoon, we worked on sending out to anyone, I had a list going around, so I sent out that information. They might have been in meetings because they had Alice trained, so it may be something that they're going to do tomorrow, but.
Okay, so you're in the process, you do that?
Yeah, the teachers were asking the teachers to go in and check their title, their phone number and their email.
And also, as well as add a profile if they wish to, et cetera, et cetera.
And the bio information.
Right.
And we were doing the pictures, but some, we didn't have all of the staff pictures this summer.
Oh, yeah, so I see, they can put a message.
That was why the superintendent's asking everybody to get their pictures taken.
So, once we get the pictures, I'll actually, we'll go through and we'll put them on for them, because at first, people started putting up ones that they, where they were like Facebook or, you know, them at a wedding, where they liked the way they looked or whatever, but what we found is it.
Not going to happen.
It just doesn't look as professional when everyone has the same background and.
In other words, photoshopping our dishes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Larry, thank you for coming today, we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Next?
Okay, yeah, the next item is just an update on school facilities, so we asked Tony, who's our facilities director, to come quickly overview primarily the roofing project at Johnny Appleseed, as well as a issue that we ran into at Skyview and just facilities in general. So, thank you, Tony, for staying a little bit later.
The custodians have been working really hard this summer. Schools are looking really well, I'm confident that we're going to be all up and everything out of the hallways by Wednesday. But they are, they really had a lot to do with programs that were going on, so, you know, a big shout out to the custodial staff for all the work they've done this year. They really, they really hit it. And we did have an extra long summer, so that helped. We've done a lot of smaller projects over the summer, some plumbing repairs and upgrades, air conditioning to a few key areas, some cobbies built in fall, I'm sorry, Skyview and Francis Drake for special ed. We did some work at Skyview on the automatic chimney draft fans that were been problematic for a number of years now, and mostly a lot of, lot of small electrical things that we did to help out with technology. A lot of the equipment that they use needs dedicated outlets that are GFI, which where they plug them in, they're not, so we have to change them out, things like that, running data and stuff. We have to have licensed electricians do that kind of work because of the nature of the work, so we coordinated the maintenance I have with technology and was involved with a lot of that. We did a lot of plumbing repairs, we had to shut some areas off late in the year last year, they weren't critical or anything, but classrooms, sinks and things like that where we've had leaks, where it's difficult to get at, they're in the walls, it's very disruptive when the kids are in school. So, we've done a lot of them over the summer. And the biggest project we have going right now is the Johnny Appleseed roof, as you are known, roof and windows. The roof itself is done, right now, they're working on edge metal and, you know, assorted metalwork, hatches, ladders, you know, the, the staff that's doing the job is, will be greatly reduced now that the roof is done. And we expect them to be there through September, finishing up ductwork on the roof, exhaust fan placement, things like that, because with the MSBA project, anything that's on the roof is considered part of the roof, even though it's equipment. So, we took this to, to repair and replace up to 20 different units that needed to be. They were pretty old, some of them are really old. Most of them are from the 92 renovations, so they've reached their life usefulness. That project is going along well, I don't see any, any kind of hiccups or anything, and actually, we had great weather, it went well over the summer.
As long as you weren't on the roof.
I tried, there's about 150 on the roof all summer.
Those guys, that's amazing.
I know. That's still tough, though.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
You can tell.
It's a white roof too.
You can tell he doesn't have sympathy, he goes to sympathy aisle three, CBS.
Yeah, well, everybody has their chosen profession.
Well, they earn their money.
Yeah, yes, and it is tough. Being a white roofer, the guys always say that they'd rather be on a black roof, and you think it'd be hotter, but the roof itself is hotter, like asphalt, but it does reflect attack on. So, these guys get like sunburns under their chin, comes out from them below, because it reflects on, which you never would think of, you know. So, anyway, but yeah, it went, it went great. Now, we're at the point where our architectural design firm is working on the window design. We're doing four sections of windows. Due to the lead time to get windows, we had to do the, the project in two phases. We wouldn't be able to do the roof and the windows at the same time. Windows typically six, seven months out, so we're going to put in our order for windows looking like October, we'll get them like in April, May, store them on site, you know, the day school ends, they'll come in and knock them out. It should not be a problem. Like I said, there's only four 60-foot sections that weren't done when they did the rest of the school, I don't know why, but they, they do need to be done. They're all single pane, very, they're old from when they built the building, so this, this will be a great upgrade also, it'll match all the rest of the windows in the building, because three quarters of the building has the windows in it. And so, that, that, that'll be, finishing up this whole project will be like on hold for the winter, and then we start up again in the spring when the windows come in, and then when school ends, we'll have them in, and that'll probably only be about a month job, not even. And then we can wrap up the whole project at Johnny Appleseed. We've been having an issue with the domestic water pump system at Skyview School. It's been on the capital repair list for quite some time. This year alone, we've had the system gone down since July three times, and it's still August. Right now, we had a catastrophic failure. It's a double pump system of one of the pumps and the housing and the motor. So, we're down to one at the school right now. It's a little close. We did a test last week, and I think that we should be okay when kids come back and everybody's using water. We did shut the irrigation system off. But hopefully, we have, we have four, four-week lead time for the motor, which we ordered beginning of last week. And because they come from the factory, it's not something you can just go to the store and buy. They have to be made. Pump companies don't stock or build things ahead of time, that's just the way they operate. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed that, but I, I, I'm pretty confident that that one pump will keep us through. There could be an emergency system set in if we absolutely had to, but I don't really wanna think about that right now.
Did you talk to Roger Brooks? Did you talk to Roger Brooks about...
About?
About this problem at the water department?
Oh, yeah, I believe he knows. Actually, he's the one who suggested we use Gestapo Preston as our pump. It's, like I said, basically what you have is this water pump distribution system. It's at the bottom of the hill because the school's up so high. The city can only provide so much pressure.
But you're going uphill.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And it's a four-inch...
That's why they build those water tanks at the top of the hills.
That's why they should have built one up there, because... Anyway, yeah, so, and when they built the school, unfortunately, the system that they put in there was like 80's technology. They put it in in 2003. I'm sure it was sitting somewhere in a warehouse and they got a good deal on it. But it is so complicated and convoluted, and it's unnecessary. And the more moving parts in it, the more breaks. And every time you turn around, something's spraying or leaking or blowing out of the electronics. It's really...
So, have they evaluated the system and they reckon that...
Oh, I've had Gestapo Preston out, they're, they're very familiar.
And maybe as an energy audit, maybe the pumps would be replaced under, under the National Grid? Would pay us to replace the pumps because they're probably not efficient at all?
We could get a rebate on the VFD drives. A VFD drive basically is a variable frequency drive. It's like a little computer. And what it does is it senses as a sensor, and whatever you want it to sense, temperature, water, temperature pressure, whatever it is, that's how that works. It's like a little computer, and that'll operate a pump. That's the type of system that we expect, that Gestapo Preston would say. And that's what everybody uses now as a modern thing. And it would be like, you know, one pump in this box on the wall, not this big giant thing with hoses and pipes and this, like Frankenstein's castle, I believe. So, anyway, yes, we, we, we have got a price for that, a replacement price. Three years ago was right around $27,000. And we could possibly get a rebate for the drive. I don't think that they'd give us anything for the pumps themselves, but the drives are what actually saves the money. Because it senses it so well that it can actually shut it off, turn it on a little bit. And it doesn't have to run like it does now, 100% if the thing's wide open, 24/7.
So, so what we need probably is somebody to evaluate the system and say, you know, based on today's technology, and based on the call for, the demand, and the demand at what time of day? I don't know whether, you know, at nighttime, I'm sure there's no call for demand. But somebody needs to evaluate it and then say, you know, based on that, looking at the newest technology, and have National Grid look at that, so they can tell us where the rebates are. Then we know what our cost is, right? I mean, but you're saying for tonight that we should be okay to get the school up and running?
Oh, yeah.
And we should be okay, and if they need it for fire or whatever, we'll be okay?
Right, the fire, the fire system's on a totally separate system.
We're talking domestic.
This is just domestic water.
I'm just saying, in case somebody misunderstands this. We're all set to open, you're okay, we're gonna turn a faucet on, water's gonna come out, you're gonna flush the flush.
There is, we have a fire pump engine.
Yep.
In that pump house. And it's a big giant truck engine, like just sitting there on the floor.
Right, it's like a company.
And it, we, it runs once a week on its own, it's tested. We have it serviced twice a year. I have it serviced with Bigelow Electric out of Worcester. They do all of our emergency generators and this, that pump. We have a pump similar to this at, it's electric, but similar system. So, the domestic water and the fire pump water is totally separate. It wouldn't have, we wouldn't be able to operate it.
You're right, thank you for clarifying that it's not a problem.
Yeah, I don't want anybody to think that we're not gonna get water up there.
It's just I wanted to make sure that the committee was the breast of the issues.
Whatever it is, I suggest two things, that you run it across Scott Farah at National Grid. And, you know, they'll look at the energy savings or whatever to replace it. And then Roger Brooks, so that, you know, they understand what the system is. But I mean, it's, it's not huge money, but you want something that's, you know, latest technology.
It is something that we should address sooner than later. We spent quite a bit on our, on our maintenance budget repairing that. Last year, we were pushing 20 grand, CBS.
Well, when the cost of good...
This year, we're over eight, nine already.
Yeah, when the cost of good repair gets to the point where something costs, you know, new unit's 30,000, you're spending eight to fix it?
Doesn't work, it's not worth it.
That, that's not, the formula's not working anymore. So, I, I'm just saying, I'd get a hold of National Grid and then have somebody evaluate it and come back to us at least, or whoever, superintendent, myself, Roger Brooks, who just understands the mechanics of our system, and say, you know, "System's no good. It's costing us more money to run it and repair it, and that's what the state of good repair is." And so, you know, for 30,000, we replace the thing and we're all done.
That's, that's the plan. When Gestapo Preston came out, they did, they come out with their engineers and they evaluated the system. They looked at all the plans and everything. So, our, our initial quote that I got back then is, was the latest technology, oh, two and a half years ago. So, it's not the same now.
Yeah, but it's pretty close to what the mayor has indicated.
Yes, oh, yeah.
But the other reason to look at the whole system is we're about to go out, our 20 years, our 20 years are up on our contract for running our treatment plants, water and sewer.
Uh huh.
And we're, we're coming up, so any changes that we need to make, it'd be a good time to, to look at that, to make sure the system's closed loop, or that we, you know, that the system doesn't just dead-end at the top of the hill. It comes around and circulates the water to keep it clean.
Yeah, it doesn't do that.
Right, well, now's the time. That's what I'm saying. You should talk to Ro, I'll talk to Roger in the morning. But our 20 years are up, and we have to bid out that contract again. And I'm not sure the same company will get it, but this is our chance to add things to it along the way here. And if that's, system needs to be looped, so that...
That's good.
It doesn't end at, at the top of the hill, and it needs to circulate around, so that water doesn't dead-end.
Right, that is something that, when you have a separate fire system and a domestic system, which is separate, but when they put it up, the system, when they build it, they'll put a hydrant in on a domestic system.
Right, correct.
And they did not do that when they built that school.
They didn't do it anywhere.
So, we don't have it as Hamlet either.
Right.
And we, so we can't do that, and it is a dead end. And that would, that can be a problem, so...
Well, it just helps to circulate the water. You have to flush the system less when you do that, it's just more convenient.
Right now, we have to flush it from inside, and it's very, you know, takes a lot of time and effort, you know?
All right, so you'll do the evaluation, get back to us, or Roger, or the superintendent, or whatever, so that we know that that problem's being addressed. You know, it's running on three pumps, it's running on one, but one good. But eventually, we'll run out of time on that, so...
All right, well, thank you, Tony. We appreciate you coming in.
Well, you know... Thank you very much.
I really thank you a lot, Tony. Didn't you do an assessment li, didn't he do an assessment last year at one of the school committee meetings regarding the longevity of the pump at Skyview?
Yes, it was part of the discussion on the capital expenditures.
Right, and did it fall within the project, the lifespan of that pump that you were talking about? Did it fall within the, within the...
Were you talking about the sewer line, the, the, the...
No, he's...
We had a meeting, we had a meeting, it was capital expenditures, and I...
Yep, it's the same project, and it's pretty much on the, on the amount that the mayor just indicated.
But did it fulfill the longevity that he was talking about? You know, how much longer that this, that this...
It'd be, I can say, I mean, we fix it as soon as it breaks, we can't go without.
Because I remember you saying the projected usage of it was X amount of...
Well, if you can get 12 or 15 years out of something like that, you'd be doing well.
Yeah, the life expectancy today, because...
And all three.
Because of the technology changes, even like air conditioning, HVAC and all that, it's got a life expectancy of 20 years.
Yeah.
And then, and then the technology changes so much, and it becomes so much more energy efficient, that again, the cost of good repair just makes it worthwhile to replace the whole. We're running into that at the courthouse now. It's beginning to be 20 years old. Just pull the system up and replace it.
I guess the concern I have is the cost, the monies for it. Where, where, where...
We don't know what the cost is gonna be.
Where we're gonna get the monies?
I don't know.
How much it's gonna cost?
So, we'll close the loop on that. We'll get the, the final assessment, and then we can, we can talk...
Depends what National Grid might give us back as part of the energy savings, if there is any energy savings.
There are a couple of grants on a rebate. You know, we were getting them on other, other things a few years back. And depending on what the items were, the more you saved, the more the rebate was.
Right.
The more you spend, the more the rebate was. You know, if it's a minor thing, it's not as much.
So, we don't know, and when we do, then we'll have to make a decision on that.
And if the drive is, you know, say the drive costs 8,000, they're probably like $1,000 or something, just to nearby, because you're going energy efficient.
Yeah. All right, thanks, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
And now, we'll move on to review of options for the school business administrator position.
Yeah, we'll go through this quickly. The main reason for updating the memorandum and getting it out to all members was this was a discussion at the finance subcommittee meeting on July 28th. We took kind of a break during the month of August, and now's the time to at least overview the situation for the entire committee. You've had time to read the memo, so I'm not gonna be repetitive. But what we were looking at is, we have a vacancy in the school business administrator position. I wanted to look at all different options for what we could do with that position. The first option essentially is there is redundancy in a lot of the work that we do between the school department and the city accounting function. So, I wanted to look at that, throw it out as an option. The mayor and I talked about it briefly today, and we'll, we'll look into it further. But this is a longer-term process, so it's not going to be something that's going to be decided upon or done overnight. But I wanted to throw out the option, if there's possibilities, we'll look at it. If there aren't possibilities, then we can determine that when we have more time to look at it in detail. But in the meantime, we need somebody in the position of the school business administrator. I was told very succinct, succinctly by the committee during my evaluation in June that you don't want me doing multiple jobs. I don't wanna be doing multiple jobs. I have done multiple jobs, either the school business administrator position in the past or the HR position last year, so we need to move away from that. So, the other option was to look at an interim school business administrator in conjunction with contract help. We currently have contract accounting services in the district for two days a week, along with the remaining staff that we have in the finance function. So, the individual that we have is very, very good. He's very, very adept at the Munis accounting system, and he can turn things around rather quickly, but we only have him two days a week. So, we can continue to work that way, or, but if we have an interim person in, either on a full one-year interim, I wouldn't go further than that at this point, or someone coming in on a consulting basis, that's one combination. The last option would be to actually expand all the contract services. So, if we have somebody in two days a week, talk to the accounting firm that we're currently contracting with, and identify whether there's additional capacity that we could bring one or two people in for multiple days during the week to fulfill primarily the accounting issues that we need to, to address. So, when I presented this to the finance subcommittee in July, we had some follow-up questions that were asked of me. One was to contact Masbo, which is the Massachusetts Association for School Business Officials. I know the executive director very well, I contacted him. But there just no individuals available, either retired or currently available to fill our function. So, we can continue to advertise, which we will continue to do. But at the present time, I only have one individual who has applied, is, has the capabilities to be able to do the job. So, and he's willing to come in either at an interim level or as a, as a consultant on a daily rate. The other thing is, is I can contact the accounting firm that we're currently contracting with, which I have. Presently, the accounting firm doesn't have the capacity to provide us an additional person for multiple days. But they've hired somebody, and, you know, in another month or so, they will probably have somebody who might be available, but we need to wait that period of time. So, we don't have to make a decision tonight. I just wanted to make sure that the options were available to all the committee members. You can think about them, and then we can decide how we wanna move forward, so...
A point of clarification, when you said the interim person, you had given a price. I thought you said per hour as opposed to per day.
Yeah, this is per hour.
Seventy-five dollars an hour.
Seventy-five dollars an hour, yes.
So, and that's for 12 months or 10 months?
Oh, no, it would be for whatever we wanted. We could bring the person in for a couple of months, three months, just to see how he works out. That's just why, what works so well here is we have a lot of flexibility at this point in time. And what I was trying to not do was, since there aren't a lot of choices, to be perfectly blunt about it, in the marketplace right now, is to keep this as flexible as possible, make sure that we can keep the finance function running with capable people, take the pressure off of the existing staff, but be able to then look at centralization, or then hopefully, the market will change in December, January timeframe, and we can get more applicants to take a look at. So, it's all flexibility to support.
Sure, because, I mean, I guess the way I had interpreted it, I was concerned about the price.
Yep.
Because if you're looking at 12 months, 40 hours, whatever...
Oh, yeah, no, I wouldn't do that, no.
It would have been like 156,000, something that we've been before.
No, I wouldn't do it on a, on a consulting basis. If we liked the individual, I'm sure that he would be more than willing to pick up the full one-year interim, and that would be at a stated salary, so...
I just wanted to make sure we weren't boxing ourselves in financially.
Either way, we've gotta...
We have to do something, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think we don't have much of a, a choice. It sounds like we have to have somebody in there. It sounds like we definitely should look at seeing if we can combine with the city. But that's not a, that's not a short-term solution. That's a long-term solution. There's probably a lot of work that needs to happen to see if that's a viable option anyways.
Probably our biggest issue is, you know, the whole conversion of Munis is happening, but it's very, very hand-holding, physically punching in, building that system.
That's a long process.
Then, everything will be interchangeable.
So, is the school at a different point than the city is with Munis? Or we're both at the same pace?
No, they're moving along at the same, it's just very, very, you know, David LaPlante and his team is doing as much as they possibly can. Then there was a maternity issue with the lady, the key project leader. And, and so, it kinda stalled out after that, because she was really the, you know, the push behind it. She's back, and it's, project's back on. So, there is a potential that, that, that could happen, it could work. It might be a, a good way to do it. This really will be, I think, the, a big help and make it easier. But, I mean, we have to have somebody that's, you know, understands the mechanics of it. That has to happen.
Because right now, our general ledger is fully built. But if we're gonna combine with the city, there's a lot of work that has to be done to do the combination.
So, that's a long-term solution that we need to, I think, we need to concurrently, do concurrent planning.
Yeah, and we did file, the mayor and I talked about this about two or three years ago. We did file for a grant at the time to be able to provide the city with the money to be able to at least get the process going, but we didn't get the grant. So, the only other thing I brought up was this...
Is that something we can reapply for?
The community compact.
Yeah, community compact. I don't know the, the details of that, but I know that...
We've gotten three, but there's not a limit. There's no limit as to how many you can get. So, we, we've got three now, so we could ask for a fourth. I'm just gonna talk to John this week about it. We, you know, there's been some, a little bit back and forth. But I think if the Munis can get us to where we need to be, then it would be much easier. And it, it just makes sense, and, and, you know, it's just, it's already being done, but just it would be, for us, it'd be just to the larger scale. And, and again, as we move towards electronic age, more and more of everything that we do is just part of the, you know, it's why we've had to increase the size of our servers over and over again. We're constantly having to pull them out and update them and enlarge them, because everything that we're doing now, I mean, just our scanning capabilities, our GIS system is enormous. So, you know, I mean, we still have to keep paper by law, but it's less and less, it only what's really required.
But it doesn't make sense for there to be redundancy, us to do things and give it to you to redo the same thing.
Um, plus it's duplication of staff, and staff costs money. And that's really where we're at with our budget right now, is trying to figure out how we can become a little bit more efficient and make staff resources a little bit more efficient.
So, with this Munis system, it's gonna be less about where you are.
That's right.
But more about you're connected to that Munis system. Kind of like the payroll system and, you know, some of that. Once it's entered in, then it's, it's automatic, and the only thing that needs to be done is changes. So, if you have a payroll deduction or something, then that physically has to be changed. Other than that, or if you work part-time versus full-time, or there's a, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield change in medical coverage or a plan, that has to be physically changed. After that, it's all just replication.
But the mayor and I have looked at various ways that we can do citywide functions, but, right, to this point, hasn't really made sense. But this one, I think, if we investigate it, could possibly work, so...
And I think we're gonna need somebody to get us in place.
Yeah.
You know, sort of take everything and get us in place. That part will, you know, that part's separate from what this is right now. This is to have somebody on staff. Heather?
So, I guess my concern is that we wanna get somebody as soon as possible, right? Because we wanna make sure that this person can get acclimated and get to know our district and our system. So, and, so is this person, I mean, this person, you said that it's recommended that we, that we wanna hire this person?
Well, it's just that the, the mayor and I were communicating with each other the other day, and this has been our only applicant. I've vetted him out, you know, he's...
Are we able, does he come, I don't know how it works.
He's available.
Does he come in here and we're able to ask him questions?
I can do that.
Or is this just strictly a thing?
I can do that, I just didn't want to... The, the underlying issue that we have is that I don't have... The underlying issue that we have is that I don't have authority over appointing the school business administrator. By law, the school committee appoints the school business administrator.
Okay, all right.
So it's out of my hands, so that's why I build the document, I build the options, but I need guidance from the committee as to what you want for next steps. I can have the individual come in, either into a public meeting, or I can have him come in and into an interview session, whatever way you want to do that, so.
Go ahead. If you're not done, go ahead.
No, so, I mean, that seems like something that we would want to do, right? I mean, if this is one of our only options that we have right now, then that's something that we.
I would think so. If you're, if you're going to appoint the person to a, either an interim or a consulting type of position, you would want to know more about the individual, so.
If, the only stumbling block is, if, if the consultant isn't covered under professional services.
That's right. It becomes, could possibly be an issue.
You may have to go, you may have to bid this out if it goes over. I don't know how much you're paying this person.
No, I'll check with Greg on all that.
So if you go over that required statutory requirement, now you're going to have to bid this out.
That's if we do the hourly.
Correct.
Well, or if we expand the contract services.
You're definitely going to have to at that point.
If he comes on as a one-year interim, that's.
That's fine. That's a one-year appointment. That's different.
And that's why the mayor and I were talking about that today, and I'll check with the city procurement officer.
Otherwise, if you bid it out, now you've just got to open it up. And of course, we could put limitations. The person has to be, or the company has to be familiar with, you know, school reporting and, you know, the general laws and all that. And so now you're down to having to pick its price, but it's also evaluating the proposals. Now you're into, for months. It may be the best way to go for now temporarily, but.
It takes time.
If we kick into that, over that threshold amount, then you have to follow the whole statutory, bid it out, post it, advertise it, get the proposals in, set up a team of people to evaluate, because if it's our decision, then we'll have to set at least three or four people up to evaluate the proposals and then decide which company to go with.
But, I mean, we could just hire him for a year as a school businessperson and give him a salary versus.
The temporary.
Doing the temporary.
Yeah, no, no, you can hire, you can hire a temporary person.
Oh, okay.
As an interim.
No issue at all.
But based upon your original question, you would want to vet the individual first, so.
Oh, okay, I understand now. I missed that. I got you.
Just to make sure, I assume, is he certified and everything, right?
Yes, yeah, he has his license, so.
We don't have a whole lot of options. If we.
We don't really have many options.
If we have to bid this.
You're looking at half the year anyways.
Well, it's going to become more complicated.
Well, it could be three months by the time you pick somebody. So you're really down to one option, and he's certified to do it. I mean, he's willing to do it for a year. By then, you know, a lot of other options.
We'll have a sense of whether he's a good fit or not, but Nona has been patiently working.
At our last finance meeting, two other questions came up or suggestions came up. And I just won't, we didn't get any answers back on that, so I'm just kind of wondering. And one was supposedly, and I don't know if it was you or if it was one of the other members of the finance committee, knew somebody in Fitchburg that they were going to ask.
I talked to the mayor about that today, but we have to.
They were going to ask and blah blah. Okay. I'd like to get, hear that answer.
Okay.
And I know I brought it up, is, I get, anytime I look at a resume, and from my past experience in looking at resumes, flags go up inside me when there's gaps. And there's gaps in this person's resume.
You can't talk, I mean, we're.
Yeah, I don't want to get into details here.
We can't get into.
But you were going to check into that and inquire and get back to us.
Yes.
So I, you know, I just want to, you know, I'm not saying that this person, you know? I know we're in a pickle. We're in a, we're in a pickle.
On the first issue, I spoke to the mayor about that. We're going to try to figure out what's going on with that situation. The second is, I didn't want to start doing a very involved profile of this individual regarding the gaps and all that until I had some direction from the committee that that was where they wanted to go. So I'll take care of that, but, you know.
The only thing that I'll, I'll say, sort of weighing everything out, is if you get the right person, and this would be maintaining somebody separate from the school department, only, and I see the advantage of it, only because if you get somebody that's good, they also help with sort of forecasting and strategic planning and those things. And that's, that's what you get when you get, you know, a real professional in the business. And I say that because, I don't know, Peter, did you write the article about Mark?
Uh, no, that was Anna.
All right. And so we were in a little bit of a predicament with, with our finances at, at Mark. And we brought in a new person, and he's not only helped us to, to get out of that sort of financial, you know, complications, but he's really helped us in looking, doing analysis for us, because we had to decide whether or not, as an example, to get into the state's pension system, because of state employees. And after his analysis, I mean, he really did a good job. He was able to advise us really well with data, and he's really, I mean, I'm saying this.
And in the book.
He's really, really helped to turn the organization around in a financial way, but he's also helped the board and Mo and, you know, the directors in sort of looking to the future and forecasting, doing analysis. So he's, he's done much more than that. I'm just saying. So combining the systems might be of value, and that might work, but I'm just saying that sometimes there's some extra value in hiring that person that has other talents that you get.
Oh, I agree with you, right?
Wendy?
So Nona's concerns, those are the kind of questions we could ask if we had the person here.
Exactly.
But not behind when he's not. But those are the kind of questions we could ask in an interview-type process. Explain these, that would be the time for that, correct?
Yeah.
So you'd get to ask those questions.
Right. And it's been advertised.
It has, so since the vacancy occurred, we've had it on school spring, which is the typical way that we reach out for school-related positions, so.
And you could ask a candidate, listen, there were a bunch of gaps in your, you worked here. Were you talking about the candidate here or the person, the other person we were talking about?
The candidate that I had included in the.
So, yeah, you can ask those kinds of questions, like, hey, what happened? You know, there are a bunch of gaps in here. But we don't, honestly, there aren't a whole lot of options at this particular point.
No, I realize that, and, you know, but I still would like to hear.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just saying, we don't.
And I think, I think we should, I think we should.
We should know tomorrow whether or not we're going to go over the threshold to require us to have to bid this, and then that will just eliminate one of our options at that point. Because, you know, or if we continue to use somebody a day or two a week, which seems to be keeping the boat afloat, that's probably not the answer. And then I think in another day, our options will be narrowed down.
So at this point, we should probably make a motion to sort of what we would, the direction we would like the superintendent to go in, I would think. And we can have sort of a contingency.
To the chair.
Well, I don't know, I mean, the only question I would have is, how do you feel about having these, these consultants work? Are they, I'm not working with these people, so I don't know whether they're working out or not. Is it, do they have any value? I mean.
Oh yeah, the individual that we have now is excellent. He, he does probably three or four days' work, and the two days that he's in, he's just a really.
But you're talking.
Penny's here, so Penny can comment, because she works with him on a daily basis, but he's just a very good person.
But I'm just saying, so that, that holds some value when you say that, right? I mean, you know.
So from an accounting standpoint, I think that we are doing well. It's just that the management of the function on a day-to-day basis, I'm doing. So I'm signing every warrant, I'm monitoring what's going on with the staff, approving every purchase requisition, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
And this person, whether he's contracted or interim, is not going to change the fact that we're still having the other person come in to.
No, we would continue to maintain.
Because that's a separate job function.
And we need that level of accounting expertise in the, in the finance area, so.
So that guy's going to stay?
Well, we have to check the threshold as the mayor indicated, because we can't afford to.
Right, we don't want to go over, because then the contractor is going to say, you've, you know, you've got to bid it.
And I'll check that out tomorrow to make sure that we know where we're at.
But when we're talking about somebody who's going to be the interim business manager, I mean, I would imagine they would be here more than just a couple days.
But they would be here, yeah, I know. It's interim on a regular basis, so.
So, you know, our ability to go over the threshold is going to greatly increase in that kind of scenario.
And I'm comfortable doing the interim. A lot of the work that we're doing is decentralizing and doing things on an interim basis. Until such time we feel that we're comfortable with what direction we're going in. So I have no problem with that, so it's up to, I can continue on the path we're already on, or I can take other directions, so.
Questions? Ron?
The question I had, Eileen was jumping on it a little bit. If you, if we use the interim, we can also use the person on the contract, right?
Yes, I think that was in the options that I gave you, yes, yeah.
And so it would behoove us to be able to have that versus going, that would not go. Having those two working together in tandem would not have us go over that drop-dead level.
It's not the, it's not the temporary appointment. It would be the contracted person.
Contracted person.
Contracted, meaning the consultant?
Right.
No, the individual that we have right in for contract accounting services.
Yeah.
That's what the mayor is alluding to.
Okay.
I'll check with the procurement officer, find out what my parameters are around that, so.
So we could use the interim and the contractor?
Yes.
And it wouldn't affect.
No.
That drop-dead, that drop-dead amount.
Well, it may, but we'll have to figure that out.
It may, it may not.
It's just that if you, if we expand and went to hypothetically expanding the level of the contract services, the, the cost of that contract and bringing in like two people, that is going to, God bless you.
That'll definitely go over.
That's going to push us over the threshold, and we're going to have to bid that out.
Then how much, how much money are we, are we willing to play with?
No, it's just, it's not whether we're willing to play with. We have to follow the laws.
We have to follow procurement law.
The procurement law.
I'm just asking.
No, I have the position budget.
Because you were saying, you were saying you were worried it was going to have to pay X amount of.
Right, because he said it was seventy-five dollars an hour.
Business management.
I wanted to know how many hours and what that looked like, because I don't want to pay somebody $156,000 a year for an interim position.
And we wouldn't do that for that long anyway, so.
You know, if you did seventy-five, forty-five, two weeks.
But that raises the question, how much are we willing? And does, I guess I'm not asking. I think what the superintendent was saying, if, if I'm correct, fine.
No, go ahead, yeah.
Is, the balance of two, having a full-time interim person for the next year.
Yeah.
In combination with the consultant that we're already using, is a really good world for us for the next year, because it, it does a couple of different things, and, and they work on a couple of different areas, but the two need to be addressed either way. So it's just a question, and he said it's funded, so if it's funded, and we could.
But how much, I want to know. I guess, I guess it must be really, really thick.
No, what would be the amount? What would be the amount to hire an interim person?
How much is this going to cost versus if we had someone? Because she's the one I was saying, she was worried about paying that $75 an hour for a whole year, and that raised up.
Yeah, but if we hire someone.
That raised up hairs on my ears. Are we having a drop-dead amount of money that we're not, we don't want to pay?
Well, we have a salary budgeted.
Right.
And that's what we want to stick with.
And I.
We've already budgeted into the salary.
And I don't really want to start negotiating contracts in public, so.
No, 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 I'm not, but I just want to know it. Is there, because, you know, I know it's in the, I know allegedly, note the word alleged, that allegedly the amount, but what happens if we have to pay higher?
Well, I, we won't pay higher, right?
We can't, because we, because we have a budgeted.
And just Ron, just for backup purposes to reel this thing in.
Yeah, 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 I'll stop, I'm sorry.
We have a, we have a financial analyst position that's open at the present time. We have a business, school business administrator position that is open at the present time. So those are the two positions that are fully budgeted, and we'll deal with those funds to be able to compensate for these individuals coming in.
Well, the combination of the two with Penny, and that puts a better world together temporarily until we decide permanently what to do.
But we have to take the pressure off of current staff, because we've got a lot of people joining in, doing the job, but you can't do it like that way forever, so.
No, I know, but everything, everything is temporary.
Right, so.
Everything we do is temporary.
Wow. Some more than others. So what I would, I guess my suggestion, and everybody can weigh in, is that we pursue, you know, an interim position, and if this is, you know, a viable applicant, then we need to bring them forward, you know, so that some questions can be answered.
And I can schedule that for the next meeting.
And we can get that moving, but we do need to move so that we can get the person.
You've got to get, this is, that's what I say, I didn't, you know, you get the right person in there, it makes a huge difference.
Absolutely.
Right now, we're looking to keep this thing glued together until we can make a permanent choice.
Right, so we're looking at a temporary position. If they worked out, then we can offer them something more permanent down the road, but at least initially, we need somebody as an interim.
And I'm getting too old for multiple positions, as was told to me by my assistant today. She looked at my.
Really?
She looked at my.
It's your fault.
She looked at my security badge picture from last year and said, ah, it's not looking good, so.
So logistically, we have a meeting coming up on Tuesday night.
Yeah.
So logistically.
We could have him.
Do you have him come to this, this meeting and just sort of prepare for.
What the heck, get it over with.
Have a quick conversation?
Keep it simple.
Or do you wait and have the subcommittee, you know, do it? And that, you know what I'm saying? You know.
Well.
I think we've got to kind of move faster than slower at this point. Do we have a, do we have a, you're right. Do we have anything on the agenda? What's on the agenda for next meeting?
Right now, it's flexible. I do have a couple of topics planned, but if, this takes priority, so I can move things around.
So why don't we have him come in for the next meeting? The only, the only thing is that if the subcommittee could get together, rather than just, and, you know, just throwing questions out there randomly.
So have some structured.
Have some structured questions, so there's a list, and everybody sticks to the list. That way, it doesn't end up overwhelming for the candidate.
And I think we've had, obviously, interviewed many business managers in the past. Maybe Chris can find some of our interview questions. At least we'd have maybe, don't.
It's always best in an interview if you can have standard questions, and then everybody takes a question and gives it, only because that way you don't end up getting into areas today that a lot have changed. You could, you know, you really get into areas, you get yourself in trouble from a candidate. This way, it's really scripted and.
And that has to, just protocol, that has to be in open session, or is that in.
No, we will do it in an open session. We can do it in an open session.
So maybe the subcommittee, we can get the word to the subcommittee to maybe meet.
Well, some of the subcommittees here.
If you can meet, to come up with just nine questions, eight questions?
But we're working it. We'll do it after, after we're working it.
I mean, you guys don't even have to, you could just come to a phone conference or something.
However, I mean, the superintendent can come up with questions.
I have, I have questions from our last round, so.
And you just give me any one you want. I'll be glad to ask that question. I'm just saying, you know, it's just a way to.
You don't need to reinvent the wheel, most of the questions.
Right, is that, is everybody okay with that? If somebody has a specific question they want to ask, get it to Chris. If not, superintendent will come up with a series of questions based on the other interviews that we've had, and we'll put them together, everybody get a chance to ask a question. By then, we'll know what the procurement, whether we're getting close in the amounts, and then we'll have some options to make that night, rather than have to wait till yet another meeting or another week.
I appreciate the expediency, because we need to move forward, so.
But that way, alleviate the burden on you.
Well, in the meantime, I'll continue to do the work. It's not a problem. We're in the, we're in the groove, we're doing a good job, but it's just that.
And we're lucky to have Penny, because everybody at City Hall enanimists that.
Oh, no.
Penny's the best thing since chocolate milk, they said.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to find out. I don't, we don't know. We're trying to find that out, so.
Huh?
It's sliced bread.
I don't know, I'm not a big sliced bread guy.
What happened to sliced toast?
Yeah, well, anyway, she's doing, she's doing a good job, and, and they count on you. That's all I can say, so don't take any time off.
Some coming.
What? Okay, and Penny, again, if you have any questions, get them to the superintendent, between the two of you or everyone, I'm sure you'll come up with some good questions, and we'll have them come in and go from there.
Okay, thank you.
At that point, by the end of the night, we'll have some options, and we decide.
Decide, yeah, thanks.
Okay, subcommittee finance policy, do we have minutes from the last meeting to approve?
Yes.
Do you have minutes from the last meeting?
We have minutes from the last minute, last meeting. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from, I don't have.
July eleventh.
July eleventh.
Yep. Any, are there some admissions? A second?
Second.
All right. Questions, comments? If not, all in favor?
Okay.
There was, I know there were a couple of people that talked about a resolution to be put on the agenda.
Yes, yes.
And so, I don't know if you want to, on to the next agenda, but I did, also wanted to throw it out there, I don't know if you're interested in having a representative from each side come in and spend ten minutes to talk about, you know, the people that want charter schools and the ones that don't.
Yeah, just have to give equal time, that's all.
I don't know if you want to do that or not.
I mean, I think that we were given, I mean, like, for me personally, I think we were given information on the site for both sides. So, I guess I feel comfortable with my vote and don't need to have a presentation.
I do, too.
It doesn't matter to me. I mean, I think if you want to invite them in, they can come in and, I mean, it's the public that's ultimately going to vote for this.
I think they've been hearing.
I'm just saying, and they're going to hear a lot more. There's a lot of money that's going to be spent.
I know. I think they've been hearing a lot about it, but I think it's our due diligence to.
So, nobody wants to have somebody come in and speak for the other side, or at least offer them? I don't know that anybody'd even come in, but.
It's easy enough to do because I have the, yeah, between the mayor and I, we have the connections, so.
Give them ten minutes. They get, each side gets ten minutes. Give you a, a quick reference sheet and it's over with.
And so, for those of us who've done sort of our due diligence and have formed an opinion, you're feeling that the presentation really is more for the public, so the public can hear it?
Just so they hear it, I mean, it's.
Hear both sides?
But it's a good venue for the public to be able to hear in conjunction with the school committee meeting, so.
Right. I mean, the job of this public school, school committee is public schools, right? Obviously. So, then, but there might be people out there that are confused about it either way and just would like to know the information.
All right.
What they're going to get now is advertising and all of that, and they're not going to get a chance to listen to, in their own community, to listen to ten minutes on each side. I don't know. I haven't heard.
So, would we be able to have this arranged? Probably not the next meeting because, obviously, but maybe the following?
Sure.
Because I think we don't want to let it go too long either.
No.
No. And then, you can decide, and then you just give it, give them ten minutes. They can come in with all literature they want. One side's get ten, the other side's get ten. Once ten's up, it's over. And then, you pass whatever you want to pass. Is that fair? I mean, is it okay?
I think that's a good plan. Actually, I've been in contact with someone from the Save Our Public Schools campaign who opposed the ballot question. So, I'd be happy to reach out and they've already indicated they'd like to send someone, so.
Well, invite them in.
That's good.
Excellent.
So, that would be on the.
That would be vote no on two.
Okay. So, we just have to find.
We just find someone from the opposite side, which I can do. But if you could connect with Chris and I so that we know.
Absolutely.
What you have done, and then, we'll look at the other side.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Ten minutes, either side, two meetings from now, done. The resolution will be on the agenda.
All right. So, you're going to put that on the agenda for the nineteenth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're going to go to, we're going, we're going to go right past five. I think six, just a reminder, we have a meeting on the seventeenth.
Right.
What time is that?
Right now, from what Suzanne Cola told me, it's eight until noon time.
Okay. And we're going to get more detail of where it is and stuff?
Yeah, I'll arrange all the locations and everything, but I just wanted to make sure that you had it on your calendar, so.
So, I have like a new business thing to bring up, so whenever you're there.
No, we're all business guys.
Okay. So, I just wanted to bring up a potential conflict of interest. I became aware of it at the very end of last year. So, I wanted to bring it up at the start of this school year. So, my husband does like the clock and the books for a lot of the sports teams. And initially, he was getting paid by the coaches would give him a couple's, you know, whatever, a few bucks out of their stipend. So, it was just a very informal arrangement. He actually started doing it for free. Then, people gave him a few bucks. And then, then I think Booster Club stepped in and ended up giving, paying him, which was separate from the school budget. And then, I didn't realize initially at first, but when Laureen took over last year, then she started paying him through the school department. So, he's not like a technical employee, he's no contract, but he did get some checks. So, we wanted to bring that up as a potential conflict of interest. I don't know how anybody feels about that.
You just have to file, you just file that with the clerk's office.
Okay.
And just explain the whole thing and, if he gets a ten ninety-nine, just put it in there, he gets a ten ninety-nine. You're not signing, you know, you just can't sign the check, you know, that kind of thing.
Right. I mean, I don't.
And you're not on the audit.
I'm not on the audit. It's not a contract. I don't vote on anything that he does.
Yeah. It's always best to just file something with the clerk's office.
Okay.
And then, that's it. That's a disclosure.
Okay.
But this is technically a disclosure. But that's just.
I'm disclosing. Now that I knew what was happening.
Anything else on the new world business?
The only other thing I had was, we had talked about starting to create a transportation committee to start to look at efficiencies. So, it's still out there. Chris Silverman and I have identified the past documentation. Gina and I will be connecting with school councils and with PTOs once again to see if we can get some cross, God bless you, get some cross-representation from schools to kind of help us out with the parent perspective on community bus stops, on bus stops in general, efficiencies in, with buses, et cetera. But we've got to shrink our transportation expense. And the only way we're going to do it is by working at it from a community-wide basis. So, I know that one committee member had shown some interest in it, but we'll, if he's still interested, okay. Wendy, too?
Yeah, nice topic.
So, we'll work through that. We'll set up the structure, keep the committee and, I mean, the school committee informed. But I'd like to be able to get that started sooner rather than later because all of a sudden, it's going to be April and we're going to be in the same boat again, so.
Looking at the schedules, looking at the bus routes. I mean, in some of the sections of the city, I mean, they're stopping and they're picking up twenty kids.
Every driveway.
Right. But, but when you get on Mechanic and you get on Water Street.
Oh, they pick up lots of kids.
They're one stop and they're picking up.
Yeah, they're getting like ten.
When you get to middle school.
Getting all the side streets come out to Mechanic.
A fee to Mechanic or Spruce or Water Street.
Yeah, but that's the way it's supposed to work.
Right. So, you can't get much more efficient than that. And, and then, when you get to the little guys, then you stop in every, just about every house to pick them up. And that's something we decided. So, it, it, as, in other words, as efficient as we've, as I look at the bus routes, as efficient, remember, we used to have many more buses.
We had a ton more buses and a ton more stops.
And we have, what do we have now?
Yeah, we've eliminated two buses just over the last couple of years.
Was that sixteen or eighteen?
I think we're down, yeah. I think.
So, we were, we were above that. So, as far as efficiency, it's really going to come to the details of exactly what, what,